We got the holdings in the house.
Are you there, sir?
I'm there, sir. All the place. You want a future.
I didn't notice.
I said hi, Eric.
Yeah, I said he's playing corn.
Oh, yeah, that was good.
Oh, really?
Building all built since I built it. That was good. Yeah, boy, it's small.
Yeah, everything. The raffle?
Yeah, everything. Yeah, I want a double maker, a double maker, a rock case. I just need to double make that up. It works out. I got one done, now I just won't buy another one.
Like a lot of suits.
Right. There's a lot going on. Oh, right. It's rushing up. They had a long time. It's rushing up. Right.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
You got an old power.
You know what? So it looks like a hybrid. Which is nothing to order. Shouldn't have ordered. It's probably able to do. Yeah. 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 He's doing it out. So, so, but a door cabinet, a door in front of it.
Everything worked out great, so.
Yeah, I had a better word.
Yeah, I did. I saw that through last night. She raised a lot of questions. I'm tired of it. Yeah.
I suppose.
Too much time.
Yeah, sure we can.
Yeah.
They had you chair a lot over there. They're using words. Right on.
Everybody.
Oh, of course.
Sometimes I thought that you were the first to say bad. She had a foot fee because you're not the day's lead. How much would you be signing for? I've been trying to get all set. I'll come in this way.
Sounds like you're trying to go those way. Closing.
There's no way. Just double that. You got a chip. And just add a, yeah. So when I hold it, that's it. Then you try to get the true door. Then that one looks bad. Check the doors and pitch. Put the whole panel back a lot. Right. Service any.
Oh, yeah, yeah, how do you look? Just good, silly. Been a long time. Oh. Yeah. But it's up. Still, still do the same old. But the worst is the service. First, yes, you still have the, the structure. All that.
I need to figure out. I need to clean it. I gotta figure out how to clean it.
It's a little rough to get it.
It's pretty, yeah, just on the north side.
Oh, on the inside?
No, on the outside. I just think that does.
It didn't work.
So that was that originally.
To Rachel, what do you, in good terms, look good? Everybody's good. Is that why? Yeah, if you marry, so it'll all add. My brother's like. She's not. She does not.
Like her. Maybe they had something. She's not working out.
Yeah. I sit there and I go. She got out of the worst, she got out of all that stuff. We spent a couple of dollars.
So that's unfortunate.
Nice to see you.
What's happening?
Your office.
Get that. Mosby, I haven't heard that before. We don't wish to ever take this.
The man has to be.
Right. This was a little developer. So probably better than here. But I think that would give us a cost. And that's from your user.
So. Oh.
So we got, um, we got a one.
Yeah. But with. So the same as I wasn't.
It was a complex. Uh, complex. So I was the one. Might see.
Yes, I want to get a.
Sure, you're back. Yes, we have forgotten.
Yeah, okay, all right. So you want to put that there? Yeah, I was.
We got that. It's like. All right. You know, right? Know what they're saying?
She doesn't want the rest.
So you're, you're like. Do you use a constant?
I drive by.
Okay, I'm a Paul Lee, you know. You know, I've been talking here all night. To the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That roll call, please.
Roll call, Dan Miller. Tom Wise.
Here.
Andrew Darian. Phil Bellinger.
Here.
Nick Holden.
Here.
Lance Gould.
Present.
George Nash.
Present.
Okay. We gave the code walk agenda. We're in that edition for unfinished business. On the first mayor.
I was gonna do that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Very good.
Before I was told.
If you, if you open him or.
I'll, I'll put the agenda with the addition of, um, new business D. To, uh, the addition of Chris Myers SLU. Request for three, seven, one, six, Southwood Pier Road. Uh, under unfinished business. So we'll add that.
All favor.
Hi. Don't worry about that, Marshall. Second.
I'll take it.
Okay, all get it. Okay, approval of the minutes from January eighth of twenty twenty five.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, minutes from January eighth, twenty twenty five. Planning Commission.
I'll second.
All favor. I think both. Okay, moving right on. Other comments for items not scheduled on this agenda. Not seeing any. Yeah, zip. So move right along. Thank you. Okay. Going to hearings. And this is a, other new business. Special lane used transfer. Four, two, three, West Dryden Road. Medicare. Sorry, that's, uh, you're good. Sean Carey, adult foster care home. So I think in the packet, uh, it gives all the information. I guess it's been a care home for quite some time. Taken it. We open it or keep it open, whichever, uh. Everything.
That's who the nurse placed.
It's been since, uh, two thousand.
Was.
Three.
Mm-hmm.
It's, uh. Yeah, two thousand and three, so. Still gonna be the same use. Our planner is there tonight, but like, they've got anything on it, so everything seemed to look good.
Mr. Chairman, if I had any address. So we don't expect them to be here tonight. Uh, they do have all their paperwork in order. They're doing the same thing that the previous owner did. They're not enlarging, they're not doing anything. We had some code enforcement, enforcement with the dumpster up on the road. We got them to push it back. We finally got them to get their, all their permits, inspections. And, uh, Ed Koch was out there and everything's in order. So as far as the township concerned, we're very good down.
Well, I was covered it too. Um, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, transfer of the special lane used, um, to Medicare. Uh, four, two, three, West Dryden Road, in a more Michigan.
I'll say it.
Okay. Okay, may I, exactly, I must have a roll call on it.
Roll call vote, Dan Miller is absent, Tom Wise.
Yes.
Andrew Darian.
Yes.
Phil Bellinger.
Yes.
Nick Holden.
Yes.
Lance Gould.
Yes.
George Nash.
Yes.
Okay. Now we get into the good stuff. Soil removal permit renewal. Michigan Sand and Gravel, right off on E Sutton Road. Otherwise referred to as the Walker pit. Mr. Carpenter of Row, do you want, do you have anything to?
Um, I mean, I can. It's, uh, I can give you a little, little summary. Um, you know, as you know, I've been doing this for township for several years. Um, and, uh, this, this, this pit has, uh, changed hands. Um, and, uh, Heiser Hard Properties is now the, the owner. The operator is now, as you mentioned, Michigan Sand and Gravel. I probably need to start phasing out the, the reference to the Walker pit. Um, but anyway, um, I did go out and do a site visit before the weather got really bad. And, um, things are, um, you know, pretty similar as they have been here. Every other year, every other year. And, uh, a few, few more things that, uh, they need to try to get cleaned up and filled back in. But we're making some progress and sites generally looking better. Some of the previous excavation closer to the Walker farm, I guess, for lack of better words, um, has been filled in quite a bit. Filled in above law quite a bit. And, uh, that may have been part of the agreement, I wouldn't say all, but.
Well, with the review tonight, I could see there was some definite improvement.
You can see from pictures. It's, it's definitely.
I compared the.
Previous.
Previous pictures. It looks like they've reclaimed where that.
So, I mean, that's it. I do give you both sets of pictures or I don't? Well, yeah. Is that something you'd like to see is pictures from two years ago in the report? I, I do that with, uh, one, one other township that I work with. I actually give them a whole set of pictures, but I didn't know.
I don't know how I got them, but I was looking at them and I go, wow, that's the difference. Because I'm a pitch by pitch and then clean it up.
Some, sometimes the pictures will, they act well. If I'm not, if I'm not paying attention, I.
Very strange spot.
Yeah, usually the sun's a little different, the color's a little different, whatever, but.
But you can see the difference.
A lot of times the pictures are very similar. And, um, it's actually harder when the pit's changing because then I have to take different pictures from different angles and whatever.
Even, uh, leveling off around the pond. They've got a pond there, it's all level there. It wasn't before, it's a lynch.
I think it was pretty.
Yeah, it was nice, yeah.
About as good as a government picture, that's it.
I say, well, except I, I have one question, Mike.
Yes.
Where are the signage? But, you know, I, I don't see them, it's the things.
Um, I didn't take any, you know, I didn't take any pictures of the signs. I'm, I'm assuming that's what you're, that's what you're asking.
Because every year we pass it.
Yeah.
They just say, you know, deal with the issues of the signage.
Um, yeah. Signage and fencing are, you know, two pretty standard, pretty common things that I look for and, and things that are kind of ongoing. Um, and you're right, I didn't take any pictures of, of this, of the signage. Part of the problem is with that particular site, it's very difficult to get to the property lines. Some of the sites I can roll right up, take pictures from the road, take pictures from the driveway, uh, that kind of thing. Um, this site, although I could have drove across the hayfield maybe, but, uh, this particular site is, like I said, that getting, getting to those fences and stuff's a little more difficult. But I'll keep that in mind next time and make sure.
Because I, I, I noticed that, you know, every approval we do is with signage.
Site, site condition has a lot to do with that, too.
Yeah, okay.
And it's wet and muddy.
Walker never planted the trees he was supposed to plant.
Um.
Unless they're there and I can see them.
No, they're not. So, um, that, that is one of the items that, uh, I, you know, I had discussed with the operator. And so this is kind of, and you guys can correct me if I'm wrong and you can, you know, you can, uh, whatever you want, you know, if you want to make that part of your, your motion or whatever. Um, the current excavation has not gone past the old driveway that goes to the Boy Scouts. And from, from the southern neighbors, you cannot see up over that driveway and down.
Down.
And, and plus there's, there's already kind of a burn there for safety. So one of the things I keep asking and that we've been talking about with the operator is, if you go past that driveway, then things are, you know, then that's gonna be a trigger for me at a minimum. Um, because like I said, right now, the trees, I'm not sure how much benefit they would be, you know, at this, at this point.
It was mostly to black the view.
Yeah.
Over that firm there, you can't.
And I did take some pictures of, you know, standing on that driveway and looking to the south to show how much vastness there is, how much it drops downhill, and the show is already kind of a tree line.
There.
Yep.
In the distance.
Yeah, that's full of forty-four.
Yep.
Yeah, I don't know what purpose trees at this point would, uh, do, serve.
Yeah.
I, I think if it, if it starts to migrate any further south, particularly past, that, that, the driveway is kind of a nice, a nice benchmark for me. Um, and right now he's migrating or working his way west. So, um, you know, when, when it's.
Yeah.
Right now it's, you can take it on the hayfield, basically.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, if you look at your pictures, picture sixteen is a, is a pretty good picture looking south. You can see the vastness of it.
Yep. How far the trees are.
To put trees off the hayfield at this point, you know.
It'd be silly.
I, I'm thinking that, and that's.
No, I think it was mostly the view from Metamor Road.
Yep. And those trees were part of the special use permit a long, long, long time ago.
I've been on this planning commission a long time.
Yeah.
That's why I remember it.
And, and I think the plan at that time, you know, was to go south. But the current operator owner is, is heading.
He's going west.
Not wanting to go further south at this time. He's headed in.
Well, it looks a lot cleaner.
Yeah, it looks great.
Yeah, it does.
She doesn't do it, yeah, they're so seated.
Yeah. Yeah. Because most of the time that reclaiming doesn't exactly, uh, come around.
True.
It's a big hole. Yep.
ours better than those yours.
Yeah, it's basically.
Yep. Go, why she in here?
Good. Of course, it's only good for a year and we're everywhere here, but.
Yeah.
And actually, this particular operator has sent me, I believe, there's two of them that usually send me the, the oddball here. And, yep.
I have no more questions.
I have no more questions.
I don't know.
Will it for a motion?
Yeah. Okay. I'll make, I'll make a motion to break me into the township or, oh, oops. Nope. I make a motion, uh, to, uh, approve, to the planning commission to approve, uh, the Walker, um.
Michigan sand.
Michigan sand.
Sand.
Incredible. Um, that it would, um, with the stipulation, with the recommendations, that approval shall include debt filling and restoration of the southeast corner of the active excavation area. The fencing and signage should be made, shall be made, being as shown on the revised soil removal plan to conform with section three oh seven point one of the soil removal ordinance, which requires fencing around the site as well as signage every two hundred feet maximum. That the method and location of mining be as such to reduce the steepness of the slopes of the excavator banks, excuse me, and to work towards the approved reclamation plan. Restoration of the site, grading topsoil and turf shall also be more of a priority as work continues as well as maintaining fencing and signage. Approval shall be, um, have the effective date of January first, two thousand twenty-five to December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-sixth. It should be made retroactive.
That was a long motion.
Sorry.
You got it right.
I'm sorry. I know, there's two separate motions, so.
We get a second one? One second. Okay, let's have the roll call vote on this all.
Roll call vote on the Walker pit. Dan Miller is absent, Tom Wise.
Yes.
Andrew Darian.
Yes.
Phil Bellinger.
Yes.
Nick Holden.
Yes.
Lance Gould.
Yes.
George Nash.
It's Michigan pit.
Okay. Move right on to the, uh, soil, I am saying, well, yeah, soil removal for the. RNS lady, twenty-five, forty-three Dryden Road, Schenckel Properties.
Yes, sir. I think, am I not supposed to make another roll shot on the, uh?
Yeah.
Oh, it's on the same one, okay, all right.
Cover Schenckel.
Okay.
And I've got one big question, Mr.
Yes.
The red line you had drawn to bond or?
Um.
The credit, I don't.
Yeah, I think to my knowledge.
I shouldn't read.
Um, there's not been a bond, my knowledge for this one. And I'm not sure if that was, um.
Any agreement, township, or ending of that?
Again. Uh, I'm not sure. Because it was a pre-existing permit, there is no special use permit for this, for this site. Funny story, the very first set of plans for this, for Schenckel, I actually, I actually did as a role employee at the time, but, so it's been, it's been a while. I was twenty-five, better years ago. Um, and it was, you know, basically the township approached Schenckel, um, and, and wanted them to, you know, start, at least have a, a plan. But, uh, because there isn't a special use permit, um, I'm assuming, you know, like I said, I'm assuming that's why there was never a bond.
No, I just thought I. Got that question out there, thought, okay. If it was in a different color, I might have just tweeted. Oh, my God, that's dirty.
Yeah. I might get more paint fixed a little.
Yeah, I, I think we're, the insurance expires four twenty-sixth, twenty-five, and, you know.
So, um, this particular pit, very similar to the one just discussed, you know, it has been, it has been improving over the years. Um, there was a, um, ownership change, uh, two years ago, and it was part of an application two years ago. But that, that property to the north, which directly abuts the River Road, Road Commission pit, you know, that, that's been cleaned up and graded up and, and that now belongs to a, a brother or something, I'm not sure, but.
You know, ownership.
So the, um, you know, the day-to-day activities, um, are somewhat limited. It's, it's, it's a, you know, I think it's a, um, it's a, it's, to some degree, an unmanned pit. Um, they, he actually has an automated gate that those that come to get material, they know the code they can add and they can, you know, use, use the loader and get their own materials. Uh, and then, of course, he, uh, uses it for his own, um, projects, for jobs that he has. So. Uh, this particular project, uh, or this particular application, excuse me, um, they did issue, uh, a revised site plan that typically do every, every, um, application. So this is where the second, where there's two motions involved. The first motion would be for the planning commission to take action on the revised plan. And that's something that you approve yourselves. And then, and then the second motion would be to, uh, you know, would be a recommendation to the township.
That soil removal plan is a soil removal plan dated January sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Is that correct?
Correct.
And that's the first motion.
Correct.
Because the planning commission just has the sole authority to, to.
Correct.
Thank you.
And, and as I was talking before the meeting, it, it isn't like a normal full-blown site plan. Um, you know, it's, it's their, it's their soil removal plan that was approved a long time ago. Like I said, I actually did the first one a long, long time ago. And then since then, Davis Land Survey has been, has been the one that has been, uh, updating it for them. So, you know, what I do is I look to see what's changed, make sure that the notes didn't get changed or something that's, you know, didn't, didn't get dropped off that needs to be, you know, there. The reclamation plan hasn't changed. Um, that's still current from oh six, it looks like, or. Seven, I'm sorry, uh, it was submitted in two thousand seventeen. Uh, same thing with the pictures. Um, if you had the benefit of the, of the older pictures, you, you could see some changes. Um, not, not a lot though. These less, the active pits tend to change a little slower.
I don't, I really don't think they're taking a ton out of it. If he's only using it for.
There was a, there was one. There was one truck an hour, I was there, not even an hour, one truck came in. Yeah, so.
That's what you did.
I'm trucking all right now. That was the only one I'll be. Uh, I can, I mean, I can see the banks moving, but, you know, that's over two, two years, so.
Doesn't work.
No.
Orange County, they buying their material from?
No, um, I can give you a summary on the other two ones, maybe after you do this one.
Just, I was curious if they.
Yeah, they're usually one of the first ones done.
Yeah. Okay, who wants to make a motion to revise?
I'll, um, make a motion to accept the, the planning commission to accept the revised soil removal. I'll make a motion to accept the planning commission, to accept the revised soil removal plan dated January sixteenth, twenty twenty five, with the recommendations of the following. That's all you have to do? That's all I have to do, okay. That's it.
Yeah, that's for us, I guess, to give your name. Okay. Roll call on the revised soil removal plan.
We have a second on that?
Yeah.
So it's a motion to approve the revised soil removal plan dated January sixteenth, twenty twenty five, for the Schenckel pit owned by Schenckel Properties LLC and operated by R and M Excavating. Second on that motion?
Second. May I second? Is that a roll call vote?
Roll call. Dan Miller is absent, Tom Wise?
Yes.
Andrew Darian?
Yes.
Phil Bellinger?
Yes.
Nick Holden?
Yes.
Lance Gould?
Yes.
George Nash?
Yes. Contained to your question, oh, I'm sorry, you got another one?
Yeah. And I'll, I'll make a motion to recommend to the township board the approval of the twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six biannual soil removal permit application for the Schenckel pit, owned by Schenckel Properties LLC, operated by R and M Excavating.
I'll second that.
What about the recommendations on that? Oh, yeah. Oh, I didn't know I'd have to get that back. With the following recommendations, and you're going to fill that in, right? Or do you want me to read it?
Read it.
It's separate, yeah. That.
You want me to go over it?
No, this is signage. That fencing and signage shall continue to be installed on both sides of the pre-existing fences and/or maintained, as shown on the revised soil removal plan to conform with section three oh seven point one of the soil removal ordinance, which requires fencing around the site as well as signage every two hundred feet maximum. Due to the rough terrain adjacent to the portions of the site, fencing may not be practical or necessary in some areas, but this required signage shall be installed, I like the word "shall." That a follow-up site visit completed in two thousand twenty five to confirm installation of fencing and signage, or obtained photos of such from the owner. But the method and location of mining would be as such to reduce the steepness of the slopes of the excavator bags and to work toward the approved reclamation plan. Restoration of the site, grading topsoil and turf should all, should also be more of a priority as work continues, as well as maintaining fencing and signage. That the approval shall have the effective date of January first, twenty twenty five to December thirty first, twenty twenty six, and should be made retroactive.
So, retroactive, the final approval, is that the January version? That in there too, so that helped me keep track.
Yeah, when I, when I first took over.
January.
Every pit had a different approval date and it was a nightmare.
Are we changing the wording to retroactive?
Keep in track.
How did you want to get it?
By.
To January twenty thirty first, December thirty first, twenty twenty six. Retroactive. Does it need to be? To January first, twenty twenty five. Twenty twenty five. Got it, okay. Sorry. And Lance, you just like that?
Okay, roll call, again on this all, please.
Roll call vote on the Schenckel Properties LLC pit, operated by R and M Excavating. Dan Miller is absent, Tom Wise?
Yes.
Andrew Darian?
Yes.
Phil Bellinger?
Yes.
Nick Holden?
Yes.
Lance Gould?
Yes.
George Nash?
Yes.
So as far as the remaining two gravel pits, John R. had a pretty, I don't know where this, significant revise, revision to their plan. So it took a couple of rounds with, with Kennedy surveying that's doing the work for him. And so I just got the latest set of plans, I think it was last week. I got through them today and actually emailed, late this afternoon, emailed a clerk, the, you know, the, but you get a hard copy of it. So that will definitely be ready for next month's meeting. Did talk to the road commission today and there was a little mix-up with his email or something, but I started getting some of that information. They've paid for their application, I made a site visit, I just never got the paperwork. So that, hopefully that will get rectified here in the next week and, and that will also be ready for the next month, so. And as far as site conditions, particularly the road commission, it, it, you know, again, you can tell they, they can tell they moved some material, it's, it's cleaned up a little. And John R., that's the one that moves. They're telling me go out there, it's like, whoa, where is he down? So. I think that has probably been the third of the one on that pit compared to the others, so.
Okay, we're going to go down, make an item D, unfinished business.
Okay. You want me to say?
Yeah.
Okay. We have a letter to the Metamor Township Building Department. In regards to the property at three, seven, one, six, South Oak Fair Road, I, Christopher Mayor, owner, and Anthony Jessel, general contractor, are withdrawing any further progress in pursuing development on the property and are leaving the property, as is at this time. Fees previously paid can be refunded in the check payable to Anthony Jessel. Thank you for your assistance, Christopher Mayor.
Yes.
And I also wanted to correct, because in his application, he said previously occupied by Oak Fair Ambulance. It's still being occupied by Oak Fair Ambulance till October, that's when they lease it. I cleared that up in the day. Lot Sam.
Well, he wanted, we, we had, he was a known hero. So tabled in order to keep clarity and give our votes, that's why I.
Sam.
He was this tonight, so. Okay. If you're at the ladder and you're making a motion, then you don't need to.
Just enter it.
Down with the standard. That's what we want, the one that gets cleared up. So an additional note on that site, meaning the work went through the expenses that we put out and he's getting a small refund, but he's staying afraid for the meeting. And then there was another individual in my office Monday for a possible purchase and that's, the best was of all, we decided that he had to bring it to the planning commission. So if something else is going to develop there, they have to come to the planning commission. Yeah, I heard a story, different thing. Something like, you got the one, that's okay.
Just wait till.
I planned to meet, didn't you?
Yes.
Leave this on the clip here.
I don't have any more communications or committee reports. I don't think we do anything to discuss anymore from the committee members. Township planner is not here tonight.
I'm good.
Any long view here?
I don't think Ann can tolerate another report.
No. I never bring my water in.
Light wrong, you heard information. Other than.
No, no, I, um.
So we can't edit about it.
You didn't have anything else, did you?
That's all we have, it's got to be about a little winner. That's all we need, one more moving.
Okay, good. Support.
Call favor?
Hi.
Hi.